The special meeting for December 18th, 2024 will now come to order at 2:34 PM. This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens forum 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services office. There are no citizens signed up to speak. We will now discuss item A, Budget Workshop Number One, FY 2026 Budget Development Process. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item presents an update on the review of the budget development process, objectives, and timeline for fiscal year 2526. And with your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Dr. Sheri Hahn, Senior Vice Chancellor, Finance Administration, to present the proposal and answer questions. Dr. Hahn.
Thank you so much, Board Chair, Trustees, and Chancellor. What we have here is a conceptual design for the budget process for this year. As you can see, we've changed it from what was originally submitted because we thought this was a better reflection of the objectives and the process. So we're going to look at the objectives first and the timeline, and then review a snapshot of FY 25, and then entertain any questions you might have. The district will enhance the budget process this coming year to ensure that the budget aligns with HCC's strategic goals and mission. We're going to be gathering iterative feedback for a 16-week period, and we have a detailed schedule of the work to be accomplished over those 16 weeks from various stakeholders, and yourselves are included in that process. We're going to base the initial draft one of the budget on a five-year lookback of data across the revenue and expense categories. We're going to develop assumptions within the budget office based on that five-year lookback that we'll share with the various departments so they understand the rationale for the first draft. And then we're going to continue to work. We're assuming that we may not have a balanced budget in the first draft, so we're going to take a moment to analyze the gap and work with various departments to figure out where we can make adjustments and eventually work up to a draft number two that we will present. We will include considerations for deferred maintenance plans, and we've got an idea about how we're going to approach those. We're going to have an information technology plan developed in the coming month by February 1st, if I recall. We're going to have a standardized decision process for IT decisions. We're working on a rubric for that so that we all understand how IT centrally manages those decisions with everyone's input, but that will apply to hardware as well as software. We're going to have a campus safety and security plan to hopefully bolster a welcoming environment so that staff and students feel safe at the campuses. We're going to consider waiving or reducing some tuition options if that works well with the budget. We're also going to consider the viability of equitable access for digital materials across the campuses. We've spoken, had an initial discussion with Barnes &amp; Noble to see what they could possibly offer. They had some attractive pricing options available. We're going to bring those back and consider them at a chancellor's executive committee meeting so everyone understands all the information. They may not be the ultimate vendor for that product, but we want to hear what they have to say. We'll be doing an RFP if we decide to move forward. And we're going to examine licensure examinations that drive growth in the credentials of value. So the timeline, we just revised the timeline. This is what we're looking at now. We have just come up with the process and timeline for the next four months. January, we're going to be drilling down deeply into revenue assumptions and projections, again, based on a five-year lookback. We're going to, and I believe Jacob's already taking care of this, we're going to distribute the template that gathers in the ask, the input on the expenses across campus in January as well, so it's all data gathering in January. In February, we're going to consider what we need to do for approving tuition and fees. Any dual credit exemptions and waivers will also be considered. Those impact revenue. Then in March, we're going to kind of gather it all together and just determine whether we need to hear from any of the constituents about what their expected expenses are, one-time events, special strategic initiatives, any growth opportunities that they saw that they didn't include in the original ask. And by April, in that work, we would believe we could have a draft that's balanced and updated draft, draft two. That would be presented to the chancellor in May, getting her feedback and approval. And then in June, the same for you. We would present it to you and hopefully get your approval at that point. And then any tax rate approvals or considerations would happen over the summer and into the So FY 25 looked a lot like this. We had basically 48% of our revenue comes from the tax base, almost a third of our revenue comes from tuition and fees. You'll notice that the correlation between revenue and expense is fairly similar on the tuition and fees, where the maintenance and operations is covered by the tuition and fee amount. They're similar, 29% in both cases. Personnel salary and wages is roughly 63% to 64%. We're going to try to keep to that. And overall, we've got about two-thirds of the cost to run the university or the colleges at two-thirds, you know, of the total expense. The next page, add velour taxes, again, approximately 48% of the total revenue stream. The goal is to maximize revenue, of course. No taxpayer vote would be required in this scenario. The good news is it's a fairly stable and reliable revenue source. It's favorable for taxpayers. We're not anticipating a rate increase beyond voter approval rate, and it aligns with the 8% max that were allowed in Texas. It's one of the lowest tax rates in Texas among large urban peers, and non-homestead taxpayers benefit from the academic advantages we provide and workforce contributions that we make. The tuition and fee piece, roughly a third, 29% of total revenue. The student impacts, the tuition and fee support supports our open access. It really gives us a way to provide what our mission is. It maintains affordability for students, and it needs to remain below the maximum Pell Award, which it would. We're one of the lowest-cost colleges within the area, which I think is really important nowadays since we have incursion by other entities trying to get students both online and in person. We're going to monitor inflation as a potential trigger to future tuition and fee increases. We're not doing that this current year, and we'll work to keep costs aligned with tuition and fees. State appropriations are approximately 15% of total revenue. Nationwide, this has been a shrinking percent, so it's not news to us here, but we have to manage it intelligently. Increased performance-based funding is really dependent on getting very granular data to reflect that we're providing credentials of value, and we're working on that as a college, as a system. It's dependent upon enrollment growth, and I know everyone's striving toward that, student completion success, and additional programs that enhance credentials of value. To support that, we're also looking at ways we can provide additional financial aid, information, and options to students so that they have a one-stop shop for that information. They don't have to go from one office to another to another to try to get help and find their financials are in order. We're also leveraging community partnerships and multiple outreach events to heighten name recognition, and I'm sure that that will be part of our new naming and branding events as well. So we use dual credits and a community events to keep our name in the marketplace. And of course, we optimize state funding wherever possible. We're considering an option in fast funding currently to determine whether we want to include payment for textbooks across the 22 ISDs that we support. We're not there yet. We're just doing the analysis. In terms of non-operating revenue, it's a small slice of the total pie, 5% of the total revenue. Mostly, it's almost $25 million on our investment interest, and our strategies comply with the Public Finance Investment Act. It ensures mainly the safety and preservation of principal. That's really key. It maintains sufficient liquidity should we have any operating needs during the year that are unanticipated, and it achieves a risk commensurate rate of return on the investment portfolio. The greater the risk, the greater the investment return, but the greater the risk that we have to undertake, so we need to be careful. Operating expenses, again, two-thirds. Operating expenses, again, 2/3 are the salaries and benefits that we provide, and that's mainly how we deliver our services, through the people that we employ. We do have a goal set by the chancellor to control salary and wage cost, to maintain that it is equal to or less than 60% of the total expenses for the college. And then there's the additional 3% or 4% for benefits. We do a purposeful balancing of salaries and benefits based on the market demand for top talent. We have competitors out there that seek out our employees, so we want to maintain them with... Salary is one way we can do it, and we are working on that. We've provided benefits like this in the past. We want to minimize turnover as well. So it's a matter of, just like with students, it's a matter of attracting talent and then keeping them here. We're going to use COLA increases and other adjustments, like merit increases, to maintain and/or improve our market share. But we need to maintain the budget bottom line. Again, major operating expenses are 5% of the total expenses. We plan, the plan is to use a fund balance, a very slight fund balance annually to fill in the gap where we may not have funds available for unforeseen or large capital expenses. But we are working on a capital replacement and purchase plan. We will have that for you. Again, maintenance is, we have a maintenance plan that we're working on. Sometimes maintenance is unpredictable. Things break, things wear out in an unanticipated way. We need to be able to fund that. We are also working on an IT network and infrastructure three- to five-year plan to look at upgrading and replacing aging equipment and infrastructure. And that should be available again in between January and February. Safety and security is important. We are adding technology where necessary. We have some events that occur in this way that no community college, no colleges has been able to resolve. Some of it involves fraud perpetrated against our students, but we're working with the U.S. Department of Education to see if there's any way we can address it. There's no immediate answer to that, but we're working on it. And that's it. Do you have any questions? Happy to answer any you have.
Trustee Cheven. First, Dr. Hahn, just welcome to the team. Excited to see you presenting this information to us. Very warm welcome. Look forward to working with you this year and further into the future. Really excited to hear your comments. Thank you. I know I sent a bevy of questions, as is my, what I usually do. I appreciate you incorporating a lot of that into your comments. Especially keen to understand how that standard decision-making process that you talked about with IT deferred maintenance and those tuition initiatives, how that kind of plays out. Very keen, and I know this is at the heart of your thinking, to make sure that centers on student outcomes as we go forward. And one thing I wanted to highlight after that long exposition is, you know, great that we're aligning this budget with the strategic goals and mission that's critical, but it also asks that we try to align with the goals and priorities that we passed for the chancellor earlier this year. To me, that feels like kind of a high grading of some of those metrics that we really want to see move in the short to medium term. And it would be amazing to understand both that kind of an assumption of success on those goals for this academic year are baked into the go-forward budget for next year, as well as the budget supports building on those same outcomes that we're putting a lot of effort into now. So just making that visible, I think, would really help simplify a lot of the discussion as we dive through the budget cycle this year.
Thank you. I will take note of that. We deliberately set aside two phases of the budget development, the draft one and the draft two, because the draft one will be based on trending data analysis, mostly. The draft two will incorporate some of the initiatives that you're referring to now. So we want to call that out so it's visible, not baked in. Yes, we're going to work on that. Thank you. Any other?
Thank you for your presentation. I echo Trustee Cheven in welcoming you into the family. A few comments and observations, and I'll get into some more specific questions. My observation has been, and I've shared this with you, so it's not the first time you're going to be hearing it, how the budget is presented matters. I think as you and your team put this together, it would be infinitely helpful to have a chart of accounts. We need to understand what the different funds are, whether we have any enterprise funds when you talk about our real estate assets. It's important to have some visibility. Our investment portfolios are merely financial instruments. We have some real estate assets that we own that draw returns, so it'd be good to have a more clear picture of how all those pieces come together, how the funds flow in, and how they flow out to the different areas. One of the things that I've mentioned to you is a need to be able to articulate and ascertain for this board and people within the system what our operating expenses are per campus, for example. I'm not saying that we can get there through this budget, but at least we need to be looking long-term. You seem like you were about to chime in.
Absolutely. I didn't want to cut you off. Absolutely right. As a matter of fact, just about an hour ago, I was talking with one of my colleagues about how we could provide a mini-training session on the chart of accounts because I want you to see my explanation that I gave previously. It's really enormous, but I can show you how the string fits into the cost and how it's developed. There are about five segments to it. Each one of those segments has hundreds of entries. Each one of those can tie into the hundreds of entries across the other five segments. So it's geometrically gigantic. But I would like to kind of sit with you and show you how that works. I can also provide the various fund numbers and definition of what they contain. We can get there, it's just not in a neatly tied bow package that you're asking for. I can't provide a normal chart of accounts, but we can give you the accounts that feed into the income statement and the balance sheet that might give you a little leg up.
Sure.
Yep.
Would welcome that. You mentioned having a five-year lookback at our budget. Are you contemplating a five-year look forward that might, and I'm not saying to specify what we think the budget is going to be, but to look at our big-picture items? Like when you talk about having an IT plan within a month or two, I'd like a little bit more understanding, is that a comprehensive IT plan or deferred maintenance IT plan? I think those are two different things. And in the five-year look forward, are we looking at big-ticket items like IT and facilities so that this board has some foresight as to where the college is today and where we might be by fiscal year '29?
Yes, that's the plan. That's the plan. The lookback does not include the look forward, but those two other separate reports will be developed with the future views and options. Yes.
I look forward to learning more about how you intend to practically help the budget align with HCC's missions and goals. So, you know, I'm sure we'll get that presentation when you bring it forward. You talked about engaging with the different stakeholders. Can you shed a bit more light? Because in certain organizations, people look at the fiscal year in arrears at that budget and build the budget based on that going forward. Go ahead.
So I don't want to wait until the year passes and then say, "Look at how we did." I just don't think that's helpful. So with Jacob's support and help, we have now redefined what the monthly reports look like that the departments will get. They will examine the budget to actual for that month, even though some items are budgeted annually. We're going to parse that down to a month's worth, look at the variance in dollars, look at the variance in percent, and then explain the variances in an executive summary so people will understand what's actually happened in that month. You won't have to ask questions about what drove it, what drove it. You'll have that as part of your package. We're also going to provide the previous year's data in that same way, budget to actuals, dollar variance, percent variance. No explanations on the prior year. I think we'll have a hard enough time getting explanations written timely for this, you know, the monthly packages. But that should give some indication about potential trouble zones earlier in the year so we can do something about them, not wait until the year is over and then wonder what happened.
Got it. My question is going in a slightly different direction, and it's, are we taking sort of a resource-centered approach to managing the budget? Meaning typically, we'll look at, what was FY '24? And start trying to peg FY '25's budget based on what our past experience was. I think what that creates is a lot of times, departments might not have a chance to really bring out the full picture of what their resource needs are. For example, online college in fiscal year 2019 was this. By fiscal year 2021, it's this. So if you were trying to set a budget for that college, you're not getting any more resources. He's not even looking at me, but I didn't want to think I was trying to send a signal there. But, you know, you get to miss the big picture. So I think it's important to understand when you're engaging with stakeholders, are they bringing in original concepts and ideas and say, "Look, here's where we are, but here's the bigger picture" so that at least from the finance department's standpoint, you're getting a fuller picture of what all the needs are? So they were not just saying, "Oh, well, you had 10 million last year, you go to 10.5 million."
Yes, it's not same-old, same-old. Although the first, the draft one, does look back. The draft two looks at making it current for what the initiatives and strategic priorities are for the current year. Yes, we'll include it, just not immediately because I think I want to have a five-year lookback that we can keep adding to year over year so we get to see the trend moving forward.
Just a couple more questions, and I'll stop my filibuster.
It's okay.
Talking about online colleges, I think if you've been paying attention to the news on the issues we've had in the Houston region, Texas, these housing finance corporations that are in South Texas who are taking properties off the tax roll in Harris County. Some of you, I'm sure, are aware of that. Online college, we face the same risk, where colleges from all over can be sent in marketing materials. Hey, get this credential in two weeks. So I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that as we go forward and whatever. It's not directed at you, but it's a budgetary thing that I think we need to be thinking about, how we don't get competed by, you know, fly-by-night programs who are trying to offer similar credentials of value. So I think let's just have that at the top of mind.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have an answer for it, but I would imagine that program development, pricing, and marketing are really the answer.
This salary wage, you said we have a target of 60% for salaries and wages to not exceed that?
Yeah, we're trying to keep under that for total. Yes.
You're correct. I'm just trying to understand, what's the genesis? Is that a board policy? Is that just an administration desire?
I think it's an administration and chancellor desire. I think it's a way to make sure that we're very mindful and careful about hiring.
Okay.
Because it's very easy. I mean, I've seen it in the whopping, today's my one-month anniversary, so thrilled I'm still here. I've seen departments say, "Here's the problem I have," assuming they can articulate it clearly, and the answer is a body. It's not always the body that's going to answer that problem. You know, I've seen it in my own shop. We can do some automation that may answer the problem a little more effectively and efficiently than just another hire. So I think we're being just very deliberate and careful about hiring.
Certainly, and I think the feedback to the administration would be, it would be a disservice to have this target that we've established to prevent us from attracting and retaining necessary talent, especially when we look at these other programmatic areas that we're going into where you do need top-notch people. And if we're not thinking about that carefully to make sure that, you know, it's a double-edged sword. I want to keep the salaries and costs and expenses low, but it shouldn't be at the expense of attracting and retaining talent.
Totally agree.
Especially when you're thinking about forays into artificial intelligence, some of the things that are going on in Coleman College. I just want to make sure that that's part of the consideration with that policy.
Totally agree.
Okay. Final comment. It's my understanding with financial aid, I know that they've been reporting with finance. I think there's some considerations about how they perhaps are redirected to a student services. I just think it might be important, as we're thinking about that, how do you keep them tethered to finance so that...
So we just set a meeting with student services, I think, and the BRSAR's office. I think the student services, BRSAR, and financial aid office should all have the same key points or menu of options that everyone understands, and we're going to put that package together so that a student doesn't have to go from one office to another to get a full picture. We're going to have one document that defines all the options, including scholarships. So, yes.
Thank you.
And we have a meeting set for January on that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, trustees? No other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hahn. This meeting of the Houston Community College System Board of Trustees will now adjourn to a closed or executive session under the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, and/or 551.074 of the Open Meetings Act, as stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action vote or decision be required in the opinion of the board on any matter considered in the closed session meeting, such final action vote or decision shall be taken up in the open session portion of this meeting or in a subsequent public meeting upon notice thereof. The meeting will adjourn to closed session at...
3 o'clock PM.
Good afternoon. The regular meeting now comes to order on December 18, 2024 at
4:25 p.m.
This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
We are reconvening the special meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to hurry because I was doing something. Okay. The open portion of the meeting of the special meeting of the Houston Community College System Board of Trustees reconvened at 4:25.
4:25 p.m.
Special meeting is adjourned at?
4:25 p.m.
And now, good afternoon. The regular meeting will now come to order on December 18, 2024 at 4:25 p.m. This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. At this time, please join Trustee Ward Johnson in leading us in the prayer and the pledge. She wanted to do because this was her last time with us.
Thank you for standing. Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come together one more time before the end of the year. Thank you for allowing me to serve. Lord, and I ask you to please continue to bless this board and guide them. Give them godly discernment. I pray for the staff. When they become discouraged, give them encouragement. Lord, let us continue to remember the mission and the vision of the campus. And as we go into the holiday season, for those who may have lost loved ones, we ask that you please comfort them and let them know that you have not left them nor will you forsake them. I pray for a joyous season. I pray for joy and peace over the holiday season and let everybody come back in January ready to work, ready to lead, and to take this campus and this college into the next century even better and offer more opportunities for people to have a better life. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
And now the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag. One state, under God, one and indivisible. And now ready to approve the minutes from the Academic and Student Affairs Audit Committee of the whole, External Relations and Marketing Meetings on November 6, 2024, and the regular meeting on November 20, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes in November, 2024? Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second. We are now ready to vote on the approval of the minutes. That's a yes for me, Sharon. For some reason, my mouse is not acting right.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
We'll now move to our awards, presentations, and recognitions. Todd DePlantis will introduce the awards, presentations, and recognitions.
Good afternoon. We'd like to now take a moment to recognize and extend our gratitude to HCC trustee Charlene Ward Johnson. It's with mixed emotions that we express farewell acknowledgements to trustee Johnson, who will be stepping down from the HCC governing board in January 2025, following her recent election to the Texas House of Representatives in the 139th District. Trustee Johnson was elected to the HCC's governing board in June 2022 to fill the unexpired term in District 2. She has been a voice for not only the community and students in the Northeast and Acres Homes communities, but has also shown unwavering commitment to education district-wide. During trustee Johnson's tenure on the board, she served as a member of the Academic and Student Affairs Committee '22 and '24, member of the Marketing Committee '23 and '24, and Chair of the Academic Affairs Committee Chair '23, and External Relations Committee '24. Trustee Johnson hosted numerous community meetings in District 2 to include the Community Forum during the redistricting process, and most recently, the Community Partnership Meeting at the North Forest Campus. Trustee Johnson served on the Board Committee for the Association of Community College Trustees, and her board meeting attendance is to be commended. While we are truly sad to see trustee Johnson leave, we're extremely proud of her achievements and excited about the positive impacts she undoubtedly make at the state level. Trustee Johnson, we wish you continued success in your new role. It is certainly good to know that HCC has an additional voice at the state level. Trustees and chancellor, please join Board Chair Dr. Cynthia Letten Gary in front of the dais to present trustee Johnson with the Christmas eagle. Trustee Johnson, as you embark on your new chapter in public service, we look forward to the relentless strides you'll make in the Texas House of Representatives on behalf of the 139th District, the Houston City of Houston, and your HCC family. If you would all remain in front of the dais, we've got some more recognitions. At this time, we'd like to invite representatives with Johnson Controls, Inc. to join the chancellor and trustees in front of the dais for the check presentation. Also joining in recognition is Dr. Butch Herrod, Central College President, Will Horton, and the HCC Foundation President, Karen Schmidt. We appreciate Johnson Controls for their contribution of $85,000 to the HCC Foundation through its Community College Partnership Program. And we want to thank members of Johnson Controls for your generous contribution. We'll provide opportunity for remarks at the end of the recognitions. Please remain in front of the dais as the next presentation. We invite representatives from Valero to join the trustees and chancellor in front of the dais for a check presentation. Also joining in recognition is Dr. Francis Villagrand Glover, Southeast College President, Will Horton, and Karen Schmidt. We most appreciate to Valero for their $50,000 scholarship donation for students in the East End of Houston. Trustees and chancellor, you may return to the dais. And we want to thank Valero for their thoughtful contribution and support to our students in the East End of Houston.
Madam Chair, can we make some remarks about our colleague, if I may? It has been truly, truly an honor to serve with you, trustee. And when I think of you, I think of courage and bravery, I tell you. I mean, no matter how much the vile forces are, you know, insulting you and your family and everything, the craziness that we know goes on behind the scenes, you stand up for what you think is right. And you do it. I have never experienced anything but deep respect from you, and, you know, I have the same for you. And it is just, you are such a unique person, and I don't even know if you know how unique you are, because you have such this combination of skills and, you know, your temperament. You know, you don't tend to get angry. You don't tend to, you know, go crazy. You just work hard for everybody. And as a member of the Latino community, you look out for us, too. And I just want to tell you how incredibly grateful I am to have served with you. Thank you.
The comments?
I did. Yes, I just want to say I really enjoyed working with you, and I know we'll continue to work together. And it's always, you know, been a pleasure, and you've always had that smile, that friendliness. And so, thank you. Thank you for working with us and for the students. It shows. And God bless you out there.
Trustee Wilson.
I'm going to be at a loss since I've sat next to you. I don't know. I won't know how to vote, and there won't be bruises on my shins when I vote. I'm definitely going to miss you. Good luck at the legislature. We'll be helping any way we can.
Well, you know, I've already commented, and I fought back the tears. But I want you to know, I will be at your swearing in. I will be there.
I'll just add to the sentiments. Trustee Ward Johnson, state rep-elect. Ward Johnson, known you a long time. I think we go back to about '07. So it's been a delight to, you know, have this opportunity to work with you on the board. Certainly look forward to your presence at the legislature. I would echo the chair's remarks that I'll be at your swearing in, but I'm not sure yet. Let me check my calendar. But if all works out, we'll certainly want to be there to support you. So congrats again.
Okay. Chancellor? Oh, Sean.
Wanted to pile on. Our time together has been very short. I appreciate your friendship and your mentorship. I think the very first thing that you did when we met is you gave me a book, The Trusteeship Book, and told me to start studying up. And you never stopped mentoring me after that. So thank you so much for the good advice. I really appreciate it. Look forward to working with you when you're at the State House.
Chancellor.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to trustee Ward Johnson, as well on behalf of the faculty, staff, and students who are enrolled here at this college, and particularly for those who are enrolled in the Northeast Sector as well. You have been a present force at many of the community meetings with principals, with members of the business and industry community, and we thank you so very, very much for all of the support that you have given to us. All the best.
Okay. I just wanted to thank everybody. I have enjoyed serving with my fellow board members and learning to know all the others, the staff and the faculty. On December 31 of this year, it would be 10 years when I discovered I had a brain tumor. And ever since then, I wanted to dedicate my life to serving. I always believed that what you do for yourself dies with you, and what you do for others lives on. So I wanted to have a legacy of service, and I'm going to continue to do that at the state level. So I wanted to just thank you again. And I've told everybody, being on this board has prepared me for anything that's happening at the state. I am well-prepared. So, thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing you down there. And you know you have an advocate for higher education in me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will now open the floor for trustees to provide information regarding activities in their respective... Oh, Todd. Okay. So overwhelmed right now.
Well, now we're going to hear from Karen Schmidt from the Foundation for comments on the donations we just presented checks for.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the HCC Foundation, we too want to thank you, trustee Ward Johnson, for your service to HCC. Thank you very much. Thank you, Board Chair Letten Gary, trustees, and Chancellor Ford Fisher. I'm honored to have the opportunity, as the HCC Foundation President, to thank Johnson Controls for its support of HCC students through the HCC Community College Foundation. Johnson Controls' Community College Partnership Program is an excellent avenue for achieving student success and attaining credentials of value. Because of their grant of $85,000, many students in our Heating, Air Conditioning, and Refrigeration Program in the Architectural Design and Construction Center of Excellence receive scholarships, equipment, certification, and licensure testing thanks to Johnson Controls' generosity. Through this grant, we are collaborating to produce technicians who are ready and willing to enter the workforce. We are grateful to Dr. Butch Herrod, President of Central College, who has been a continual advocate for the partnership between HCC and Johnson Controls. This partnership has greatly advanced the Heating, Air Conditioning, and Refrigeration Program at HCC. Now, I'd like to invite Mr. Lucas Motica, General Manager, Johnson Controls, to the podium for a few remarks. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
One, thank you all for having us so much. We appreciate the opportunity. It's kind of hard to follow all of those speeches, by the way. Very heartfelt. More than anything, I just wanted to let you know how humbled we are that we have the opportunity to be able to partner with HCC and to work alongside HCC on a daily basis. It's one thing to be able to give a check. It's another thing, as you described, to be able to roll up your sleeves and be involved on a daily basis. I've been with Johnson Controls for 18 years here in Houston. Actually, not a native Houstonian. Johnson Controls brought me to Houston 18 years ago. Call myself a Houstonian now. But we are very passionate about our city, as are you, and our Houstonians, and the future workforce that's sitting in the classrooms and coming through HCC right now. I will tell you that Johnson Controls, we have over 500 employees in just Houston. Our whole ability to be successful is because of our people. And our whole ability to be able to continue to grow and take care of our customers and take care of our people requires and allows for partnerships like we have with HCC. I will say one more thing that I think is important. I shared it as we began, but our goal is to not just hand a big fake check out. Obviously, you already got the real one. But more to have my team and myself on campus, in the classroom, with your teams and with your people and with our students as often as possible. I shared just a minute ago is, we do have a workforce shortage, but we also have so many people coming out of school that maybe don't understand what work ethic looks like, what integrity looks like, what it looks like to do things the right way, and understand what employers look for. what employers look for as they're coming out of school and into the next level. Our goal, whether they come to work for Johnson Controls or not, we would love that opportunity, is to be able to partner alongside HCC, to be able to help in any way that we can to get the students ready for that. So, with that said, I want to thank you again. We are so humbled and honored to be able to be partnering with you all and continuing to grow our partnership going forward. Thank you.
And as a board, we thank you, because what you do, you don't have to do it, but you chose to pour into Houston Community College, not with just your money, but also with your time, and that is so valuable, and we're so grateful. Thanks again.
Now, I'm honored to have the opportunity, as the HCC Foundation President, to thank Valero for its support of HCC students through Houston Community College Foundation. Valero has committed $50,000 to scholarships for students in the East End of Houston. This commitment to students, particularly those pursuing and associates of applied science and process technology, is greatly welcomed. Valero's newly established scholarship will help East End residents pursue a valuable degree, leading to careers as chemical plant and systems operators, process technicians, and other refinery- applied professions. We are grateful to Dr. Frances Villagrand Glover for her leadership at Southeast College, and to Sarah Montalongo Oviedo Vidos, Valero Manager of Refinery Public Affairs, who championed this scholarship initiative and is a wonderful HCC Foundation Board Member. Now, I would like to invite Mr. Lon Brenner, Vice President and General Manager, Houston Valero Refinery, to the podium for remarks.
Thank you, Karen.
All right. A little more vertically challenged than the prior speaker, I think. So, on behalf of Valero, we're excited to make this investment of $50,000 to support scholarships for students from the East End. This contribution will have an enduring impact on both the students and the future of Houston. Now, these scholarships will empower talented individuals from underrepresented communities to pursue higher education and develop the skills needed to thrive in today's workforce. By investing in the education of these students, we're equipping them to contribute meaningfully to our local economy and society. The graduates of Houston Community College will soon join the workforce, bringing fresh perspectives and valuable skills to industries across Houston, including ours. Many will remain in the East End, where they will play a vital role in strengthening the local economy. Others will take their talents across the city, making significant contributions in a range of fields from healthcare and technology to business and public service. We believe that our investment does more than just fund tuition. It creates pathways for these graduates to uplift their communities and enrich the broader city of Houston. It ensures a bright future for all of us as we build a more skilled, diverse, and innovative workforce for the years to come. Thank you, Board, for your unwavering commitment to education, opportunity, and the future of our city. Thank you.
I'd just like to say to Valero, thank you. Being a resident of the East End, I've seen Valero grow, and more than anything, I'd like to say thank you to Sarah, because her family has been very strong in the East End. And so, I know your grandma is smiling down at you, and so, thank you. Thank you for always thinking about our students and doing better for our community. So, thank you. Thank you, Valero.
And we'd like to thank Karen again, and thanks to Johnson Controls and Valero for their donations and support to HCC. Madam Chair, this concludes the awards, presentations, and recognitions.
Thank you, Todd. We will now open the floor for trustees to provide information regarding activities in their respective districts, and overview from conferences or workshops attended, and are to recognize individuals for outstanding contributions in the community that promote education and community services. We ask trustees to limit their comments to no more than two minutes. Any comments, trustees?
I just want to make the comment that we did have two meetings in the North Forest Area Northeast regarding the Town Hall for the name change, and it was very well attended. Very well attended, a lot of good feedback that was given. I've gotten some good feedback about the meeting, and they were glad that we're having those meetings regarding the name change, because it's very important to continue to have community feedback. And also, we did have another Town Hall meeting that was very well attended. So, I wanted to thank the staff who had to come in in the evenings and in their lunchtime to take care of those two events.
Trustee Cheven.
We also had a Town Hall meeting on December 2nd at West Loop Campus. Just want to thank Dr. Webster and his team, as well as Dr. Ford Fisher and her team, for making that such a success. We had about 50 people in attendance, had some great discussions. The number one insight that I got from folks that I was talking to afterwards was, wow, I had no idea that HCC did all this. And we got a lot of good feedback on the name change, but I think more importantly, we opened some eyes. So, a lot of work to be done to convert that into additional opportunities for both the students in the area, as well as the campus itself, but great start. So, thank you, Dr. Webster. Thank you, Dr. Ford Fisher. It was an amazing event.
Any other comments? Trustee Laredo.
I also like to thank our community. I went out during the month of, it's November and December, and to different events that we had at the colleges out there. One in particular was the seniors getting their nails done at the Southeast Campus and at the Central Campus. So, that's going to go in line with what we're going to have in our agenda here. And also, going to meetings and just supporting all the projects that our district is doing out there, I was able to attend. And the biggest one was our graduation. You know, I always look forward to graduation, and we had our Police Academy, our Fire Academy, the MT, and we had the student graduation that was very, very well attended. So, congratulations to all that made it happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Want to take time to acknowledge some of the things that have been going on in District Four, in particular around Coleman. Over the last month, we had an opportunity, actually last week, to host a Taiwanese delegation of over 30 students that are potentially interested in some healthcare offerings. And so, these are high school seniors that we hosted a visit for, so thought it was truly an incredible opportunity to highlight what Coleman has to offer, and in this case, Chancellor to a group of prospective international students. Present at that presentation included the head of the, and I don't want to misspeak, I know it's the Taipei...
New Taipei City?
Yeah, Taipei?
New Taipei City.
New Taipei City. And so, we had the Deputy Minister of Education was present, as well as their leading person here. So, that was important to have them really get to tour. Councilmember Willie Davis of At-Large Position Two was also along for the tour. So, really gave us a great chance to highlight what we're doing over there at Coleman. Similarly, we had an opportunity to have our first graduating cohort of students that are part of the REACH program. REACH is a public-private partnership that HCC established with Harris Health, and I'm forgetting the organization's name. The nonprofit partner?
Capital Idea.
Capital Idea, thank you. I was there with Dr. Webster. We had nine students in that graduating class. And the way the program works, it was established about three years ago. Is Dr. Robinson, I don't see her. No, she's not here. It was started about three years ago, where we established a partnership with Harris Health, where they are paying their existing employees to help them upscale to where they could become patient care associates. And so, they went through 12 months of training, and we graduated the first cohort. The natural next step for them might be to pursue their LVN. So, Dr. Harrison, there's a lot of opportunity, because I know that it's a program that we anticipate that will grow over time, and we can certainly attract more students. I think it's also an opportunity to acknowledge the fact that we now have students being able to take courses here at 3100 Main, within the healthcare program, as well as at other campuses. And so, it's really part of our effort to broaden the accessibility and pathways where we can get more students into Coleman. So, I'll leave it at that. Those are just, there's a lot of fabulous other things going on in District Four, but in the interest of time, I'll let the meeting proceed.
Okay. The following meetings are scheduled for January 2025. January 15th will be the committee meetings. Time to be determined. January 15th will also be the committee of the whole meeting, which will be at 4:00 PM. And on January 29th will be the regular meeting at 4:00 PM. The meetings will be held at the HCC Administrative Building, 3100 Main Street, and will be posted according to the Open Meetings Act requirements. This is the month we have two trustees celebrating a birthday.
I'm elated to have celebrated my birthday on December 1st. And we have a Christmas babysitting up here. Trustee Dave Wilson's birthday is on December 25th. Happy early birthday, Mr. Wilson. Finally, this is our last regular scheduled meeting for the year. And as we come to the end of another year, on behalf of the HCC Board of Trustees, I would like to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, and I look forward to greeting you in the new year. Have fun, eat a lot of food, come back 10 pounds bigger, because then I know you had a great time. This concludes the Chair's report. We will now hear from Dr. Ford Fisher with the Chancellor's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I would like to take just a moment to extend thanks to Johnson Controls and Valero, also for their longstanding partnership and support. It is certainly a privilege and an honor to work in partnership with them to empower our students and to provide talent for the workforce. So, I thank them very, very much on behalf of our team. With respect to the Fall 2024 Enrollment Update, I am pleased to provide another positive enrollment update. With fall enrollment ongoing, HCC is up by 8%. Additionally, our spring enrollment for spring of 2025 is up at this time by 18%. On December 13th, as was mentioned, we celebrated a momentous occasion at Houston Community College, a 2024 Fall Commencement Ceremony. Now, this is truly one of the most fulfilling times of the year, as we come together to recognize the incredible achievements of our students. 1,378 students registered for commencement, and 1,199 students participated in the ceremony. Our oldest graduate who joined us for the ceremony, 77 years of age, and is a living testimony that it is never too late for one to accomplish their educational goals. I want to thank everyone who worked behind the scenes to make the ceremony a reality. The graduation committee worked countless hours to ensure everything ran smoothly, and I want to personally acknowledge their hard work. I also want to thank the board members who were able to attend. Your presence meant quite a lot to us and to our students, and we thank you so very, very much. So, once again, congratulations to all of our graduates, and thank you to everyone who made the celebration possible. On Monday, December 16th, Dr. Wynne Rosser, the new Commissioner of the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, joined a call with TACSEOs to discuss matters important to community colleges, including our legislative priorities for the upcoming Texas Legislative Session. Dr. Young has shared that information with our board and with members of the team. And so, we're looking forward to the beginning of the legislative session. We know that on January 14th, that will be the opening day of the 89th Texas Legislative Session. February 3rd will be Community College Day at the Texas Capitol. February 9th through the 12th will be the National Legislative Summit, and February 11th, the Texas Delegation Breakfast, and the to-be-announced meetings with senators. So, we will be providing additional information to our board members about those events as well. Community partnership meetings, community partnership meetings, as has been said, have been held throughout the district to gather valuable feedback that will help shape the future of our institution. These meetings have provided an opportunity for community members to share their perspectives on a potential new name change for Houston Community College, as well as their perspectives about HCC and how we can collaborate more effectively, distinct in our community partnerships moving forward. All of the positive comments have been very, very rewarding to us as we listen to community members talk about the work that they appreciate being done here at HCC. The remaining community partnership meetings will be held during the month of January, and so, I want you to please visit our website at hcs.edu/educp. I want to thank the Board of Trustees and leadership team for their efforts in making these meetings meaningful. I look forward to updating the board and community on our findings. Like to take a moment just to mention the Bank of America's prestigious Neighborhood Builders Award. On December 4th, HTC Southeast College was awarded Bank of America's prestigious Neighborhood Builders Award in the amount of $200,000 to launch the Yellow Brick Road Project, which was an idea that was presented by Dr. Villagrand Glover. It is an innovative initiative designed to transform access to higher education for students underserved communities. The grant will support efforts to remove barriers to college success for underserved students and first-generation college students. So, please join in congratulating Dr. Villagrand Glover and the team at Southeast College. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Unfortunately, Jonna Garcia, the 2024-25 United Student Council President, is not able to join us today to provide the USC report, but I want to thank him for his dynamic, his impactful commencement speech. If you did not have an opportunity to hear his inspiring message, you can find it on HCC's YouTube channel. Now, I would like to invite Dr. Nicole Butte Heinaluma, the 2024-25 Faculty Senate President, to the podium to present the Faculty Senate Report.
I'm the short one. Thank you, Madam Chancellor. Greetings, members of the board and Madam Chancellor. I hope each of you was well today and are ready for the holidays. I know I am. This afternoon's remarks are brief, and I'm sure that's going to be appreciated. First, on behalf of the 1,199 students who walked across this stage on Friday, I would like to thank the Chancellor, each board member, President, Vice Chancellor, Associate Vice Chancellor, Dean, faculty member, and all of our amazing staff who were able to be in attendance. Students will look back on that day and know they had the support of the HCC family. Your work on students and faculty behalf does not go unnoticed, and we are truly grateful for all that you do for us. Second, it's been a long day. Our last Senate meeting was held just this morning. This morning was both reflective as to what we have accomplished thus far this year and forward-thinking as we look at what initiatives we need to tackle next. In this meeting, we approved the creation of a full-time faculty emergency fund, akin to the adjunct emergency fund we already have in place. The purpose of these funds is to support faculty when unexpected catastrophic events occur in their lives. On good news, as well, for the first time ever, a new community initiative. Faculty Senate adopted a family of three, a single mom and her two children, sons ages 11 and four, through the Star of Hope Mission. Donations from senators allowed us to give over $550 in gifts and gift cards in the holidays for the holidays, and we will be working with that family through the spring and beyond, and I do hope this continues once my tenure is over. is over. Our faculty are amazing, not just in the classroom, but also in our communities. We are indeed Houston's community college. I thank you for your time, your attention, and your support of my esteemed faculty colleagues. Trustee Ward Johnson, congratulations. We wish you the best of luck on behalf of faculty, and again, happy new holidays, and we, the senate, look forward to working with you in the new year.
Thank you so much, Dr. Butte Heinaloma. And now I would like to invite Mr. Aaron Henry, President of the Staff Senate, to the podium to present the Staff Senate Report. Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Chancellor. Happy birthday, trustees, and thank you trustee Charlene Ward Johnson for your service. Know you'll do well in Austin. I hope you all are enjoying the season and all that it brings and what it means. Since a kid, I hope, and I hope it never changes, I have recognized this season has been the most wonderful time of the year. It's perfectly placed at the end for so many reasons, but I immediately think about reflection. First, I want to begin with sharing with you while reassuring you the board that the staff here at Houston Community College are yet committed to the mission and vision of this institution. I want to first begin by sharing public congratulations to our testing professionals at this institution. I visited with some of them earlier this week, and they are so excited about the accomplishment that they have made in receiving the national designation for this college and what it means to this institution. So kudos to the team at the Northwest College and Northeast, as well as Ms. Piper Butler and Dr. McLean. This is what we call moonlight behavior. It's going to the moon type of work. I would also like to reflect on the year with our wonderful staff members and all the work they've done. You just heard the report from our chancellor in regards to enrollment, and it is up again. Enrollment has continued to be up since last fall. And it is kudos to the great work to our staff members who is helping this to create a reality for all of our students. From enrollment services to outreach and recruitment to our admissions advisors and so forth, HCC has so much to be thankful for in regards to the work that we're doing. So many residents and individual students are getting the opportunity to experience the credentials of values in all of our programs we have here at this institution. Thanks to all of the staff who've made the most memorable time of the year a huge success, graduation, which is the best proof that we are completing and graduating students. One of our largest fall ceremonies yet. Thank you to the trustees for each of you for the work that you do, the insights you bring, and the meaningful dialogue and feedback. Staff across the system are encouraged by the spirit of collaboration and the work that you do. Thank you for your commitment to the college, and since passing the largest pay increase that the staff members have received, we thank you. We thank you that it was not just another pay increase, but it was equal to all of our colleagues across the system. Since then, the Staff Senate has even hosted a financial literacy class. And trustees, I'll share that some staff members are so grateful that they're hearing about how to budget and manage their money and pay their mortgages. I can't say thank you enough. Last but not least, please, everyone here, consider before December 31st, donating to the HCC Staff Senate Fund. This fund is not only for the senate, but for emergency funds for staff members. You can go to the HCC Foundation website and use the single donation form, or you can also go to hccs foundation forward slash HCC Staff Senate donation form. I want to publicly thank Dr. Norma Perez for her large gift, for it is greatly appreciated. Leaders like Dr. Perez, leading by example, is so worth acknowledging. Thanks to everyone who have contributed to the fund thus far. There are some concerns staff have raised, but we will end this year on a good note. We will end the year with enjoy the season, warmest wishes, may your days be merry and bright, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Feliz Navidad, so forth, your tradition, and Happy New Year. See you in January.
Thank you very much, President Henry, and thank you also, Dr. Perez. Really do sincerely thank you for your support of our students. And now, I would like to invite Dr. Francis Villa Gran Glover, President of the Southeast College, to the podium to highlight our credentials of value. Dr. Villa Gran Glover.
Good evening. Thank you, Chancellor, members, trustees, the board, trustee Johnson. He will be dearly missed. Your success story is truly an inspiration. So, thank you. So in this season of celebration and gratitude, we're honored to share a heartwarming credential of value story that truly captures the gift of education. Today, we spotlight Chris and Christie Cervantes, whose journey together began right here at Houston Community College. As first-generation college students, they met by chance at an HCC registration event, a moment that would become their own special holiday miracle. Today, Christie serves as an advising manager for our HCC Online College, having earned her master's degree, while Chris has established himself as both a supervisor and entrepreneur in the welding industry. Their success story rooted in HCC Southeast College showcases how dedicated faculty mentorship and practical hands-on training can transform lives and create lasting legacies. Let's hear how their HCC experience laid the foundation for their achievements.
When I graduated from high school, I had no idea what I was doing. You know, I didn't know what to do. And so I remember that some family members were saying, you know, why don't you go to the local community college down the street, which was HCC Southeast?
My brother was coming to HCC, so I was like, I'm gonna do what my brother does, and it'll come in here. I didn't have no idea what I wanted to do, you know? Then eventually, you know, got into welding.
I was hoping students, and I think that you came to register for classes.
Yes.
And then that's where we crossed paths here. And then several years later, after we got married, I had already finished my degree, and I was going back for my graduate degree, for my master's degree. And you were seeking on-the-job training, they were actually training you to be a welder. And I had mentioned, at that time, I was working as an advisor, and I mentioned, hey, we have a welding program here at Southeast. What if you also get on-the-job training? And so we looked at having you return back to school.
And I did. And, you know, I learned, I learned a lot. I learned a lot. It put me in that position to, to get to where I'm at now, where, you know, supervisor, started my own business, and moving forth, you know, growing my business.
Yes.
As a first-generation student, I think I inspired my family to, to go to school also. So I inspired my sister to go to school. She ended up going to UT.
I would say as a first-gen college student, I have inspired several members of my family. I have nephews and nieces. I actually had a nephew who attended here, HCC Southeast, took a couple of classes. He also ended up going into the welding field and obtained his welding certification as well.
My experience here, the education was like, very hands-on, learning how to use the machines, learning how to MIG, TIG, and STIC. I got a blueprint training, so I learned how to, learn how to read blueprints correctly. It helped me get my foot inside the door where I wanted to be at.
If it wasn't for HCC, I wouldn't be where I'm at. I actually have to give all the credit to HCC Southeast. So I'm currently, right now, the advising manager with HCC Online College. I oversee a team of 13 advisors, wonderful advisors, and we actually help with our students here at HCC, our online learners. And so I have to attribute all of my success to HCC Southeast.
My end goal is to obviously invest in my own business, have a, have a team that I, that works for me, and also be a teacher, like teach people to get to where I'm at.
So if I may, Chancellor, invite Chris and Christie and their beautiful son, handsome son, up to stand up, be recognized. So, Dr. Villa Gran Glover, why don't we invite them to come to the front of the DS, and we'll get a photo with you.
Thank you.
And our board members, please, let's stand behind them.
And a future HCC student too, as well. Hi, sweet boy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Chrisy, Chrisy.
Aw, Kelly.
Chris, Chris, you have a vicious heart. I wish you well in your Chilts, your office.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Dr. Villa Gran Glover, Dr. Drain, members of the team. In closing, I would like to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to the Board of Trustees for their wavering commitment and tireless efforts. As elected officials, you have worked relentlessly to uphold the values and mission of this institution. And on behalf of our entire team, I would like for us to stand and thank you so much with a round of applause. Thank you so very, very much. And I would also like to extend my heartfelt thanks to all of our dedicated employees for the exceptional work you do each and every day. Whether in the classroom, behind the scenes, or in any other capacity, your contributions are truly appreciated. So as we approach the holiday season, I hope you all take time to relax and recharge. You've earned it. I wish each and every one of you a joyful and peaceful holiday break filled with rest and rejuvenation. Let us return in 2025 renewed, energized, and more determined than ever to continue making a difference in the lives of our students and in the future of our institution. Madam Chair, this now concludes my report.
Thank you, Chancellor. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the application for hearing 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. Time allotted to each citizen or organization shall be limited to four minutes. The board may stop any speaker who makes complaints against a specific trustee or employee or comment about appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a specific employee. It may require the speaker to resume his or her comments and close session as permitted under the personnel exception of the Open Meetings Act. The following persons signed up to appear before the Board Trustees: Scott Porsky and Michael Powell. Scott?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. My name is Scott Porsky, and I'm an attorney. I'm also an employment law attorney here in town. I have four clients in a case against HCC. My clients hold specialized positions. They're essential to HCC Police Department and HCC as a whole. They ensure compliance with federal and state laws. They took oaths to protect and serve this institution and this community. Despite harassment and retaliation that my clients have experienced because of whistleblowing, my clients have continued to perform their jobs with dedication, even when the HCC failed to support them. HCC terminated Michael Benford and Artona Walker, yet several high-ranking officers they appointed unfortunately remain in place. These officers...
Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
I must read a statement. If you wish to comment on a complaint against a specific employee or officer...
But these are not, these are no longer employees. Benford and Artona Walker were, had been terminated. And then...
However, you're not...
So these individuals have weaponized internal investigations.
Excuse me, one more, my cut, Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
One sec.
That's, that's fine. If you're going to continue, keep the comments more general in nature, then we can continue an open session. I think that was the remainder of the chairs.
Okay. These officers have weaponized internal investigations. They've issued baseless demotions and suspensions, and they've made false accusations accusing my clients of misconduct, when my clients have in fact exposed misconduct. So there's a number of individuals, there's a very egregious example of, of, of an individual that's currently hired by HCC that also collaborated with Chief Benford. They were involved in some really horrendous criminal activity where there were, one of these individuals was, failed to act when another individual was, another officer was raped and impregnated a minor student. But this individual, who I, I obviously respect your rules, and I will not name it, but this individual is still employed by the college, employed by the police department even as we speak. So what I'm trying to get at here is that there, there are issues. There are issues with hiring that we have in the police department. We know Benford and Walker have left. They are no longer here anymore, and they've terminated.
Mr. Porsky, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you again, but those individuals still have personnel records that, at the college. And so I'll ask you one more time if we could keep the comments general in nature.
Right. So they have, they're no longer here, and we think that's a valid decision. But unfortunately, what we have here is we have a lot of people that they've put in place. They have a lot of people that are unqualified, and they shouldn't be in those positions. And they're causing problems for my clients who are trying to do their jobs and trying to do them well. And so I bring you here not as, I hope that you see me not as a, an enemy or someone who's against the college, because I don't, I'm, what I'm trying to do here today is I'm trying to help the college. And I'm saying as an employment law attorney, there's big issues with the hiring practices in the police department. And because this is a police department, and because they protect the students and the community, this needs to be looked at very seriously. And so what I've, what I proposed, and what I had, and I had a letter that I believe Mr. Lamp was going to give to you tonight, I tried to address these issues by proposing what I would call a gatekeeper. There needs to be someone appointed that can have a check on the police department, that can review the background investigations and ensure that these hires are made, the suspensions are properly made. It's similar to what HPD has on Chapter 143 as well. And I ask that, that a proactive approach be made, that the board get ahead of the problem rather than behind the problem. And so...
Mr. Porsky.
And so, so let me finish with this. There's a lot of smart people in this room. There's a lot of doctors. We have a lot of resources, and we can make this happen. And if you're willing to open up a dialogue to make that happen, to fix these problems, and take a proactive approach, we stand, me and my clients, ready to assist the board in whatever endeavor they self-wanna propose. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your concerns raised during the hearing of citizens portion of this meeting. Now we would like to, is Michael Powell here? Okay. If the matters you raised are not included on the board agenda, state law specifically, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the board from discussing or acting on these issues at the board meeting. The comments provided will be taken into consideration, and thank you so much for your comments. We're now ready to consider the consent agenda. Are there any other items, are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda and set aside for discussion? Okay, there are no items to be pulled. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's moved.
Second.
It has been moved. And second, we will now vote. We will now vote.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Is there a motion to approve Item A, Janitorial Cleaning Services, Project Number RFP 25-04?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This item is submitted as a recommendation to the Board to authorize the Chancellor to execute a contract with HHS Educational Services LLC. With your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Dietrich von Bittenfeld, interim executive director of procurement, will provide an overview and answer all questions. Dr. Bittenfeld.
Good evening, Board and Chancellor. Thank you for your time this evening and appreciate your service. This is a janitorial cleaning service contract awarded... Recommended for award through RFP 2504. It includes all system buildings and quite an expansive list of services, including any emergency services or last-minute services and deep cleaning that we need in addition to our regular 24/7 hour availability and cleaning for 3100 Main and the campuses.
Any questions, trustees?
Madam Chair. Given some recent information that came forward, I'd ask that we consider postponing moving forward with this item, just so that trustees can get more information.
Since we've opened the item for discussion, we'd need a motion to postpone and then a second, and we could vote on the motion to postpone.
Make a motion that we postpone the item for further information for trustees.
There's a second?
If there's no second, then the motion dies for lack of a second.
Trustee Wilson.
I don't understand the total value of $27 million as opposed to the $5,400,000.
Yes, trustee. In an effort to provide transparency, we are now providing not only the past spend, but also the anticipated spend over the duration of the contract plus any anticipated renewals.
And the... And that is? Duration of the contract is what?
So we've got, of course, the initial term, and then I believe it's two additional renewals. I'll pull it up.
Mr. Kraken has the number of years.
Yeah, so it ends up being five years.
Five.
And the annual is $5,442. In the total for all five years is 27. Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
Any other comments?
I do. So we would be voting for two years. And then during that tenure, then we would have the option to renew for three more years.
No, trustee. You'd be voting for the expenditure or the option at the Chancellor's discretion of this entirety of the expenditure. And throughout the contract process, there would be opportunities to non-renew the contract. But this vote is to allow facilities to operate and have certainty in the contract based on the pricing provided, which is tied to the potential of a two-plus-three-year renewal.
Trustee Chieven.
So just to make sure that I understand, how does this come back to the Board over time? Does it come back to the Board for a renewal at the end of year two, for years three through five? Or would the Board have to intervene for it to not go a full five?
No, essentially what you're approving is the initial two-year contract term and then the option that the administration has to extend three additional one-year terms. And so assuming that the vendor is performing adequately and there's not issues, we would renew and go the five years. That would not have to come back to the Board. If, as we're approaching that two-year initial term, if it looks like we're having difficulties, we may choose not to do the extension, in which case we would issue a new RFP, and then the results of that would come back to the Board.
Could you just provide some context about why this method of procurement is used for this? It just seems a very long time for a service that there should be a lot of competition in the market for it. I know you can always, at two years, go and do another RFP, but just curious why we're going out this long term for something like this?
Well, quite a bit of this is the initial investment in planning. Of course, they've got to price the square footage. Many of the vendors before, in the pre-bid proposals and other processes for the RFP, because we're looking beyond price, we're also looking at their planned delivery method, what their offering is for small business and some of those other aspects. Then they also will possibly have transition costs if it were a new vendor awarded. So those are factored into their bid responses to ensure profitability and ability to deliver the quality of services that we're requiring. And so throughout that, if we did a shorter term, we would probably see a much higher proposed price through the solicitation method.
What did we spend last year?
The spend in the prior years was $4,989,496.56.
About a 10% increase? Okay.
Yeah, it's a 9% increase. And just to add to the previous answer, a contract like this is very labor-intensive, so there's a ramp-up that has to occur with the labor. And so when you do those transitions, they can be difficult as one vendor is winding down and the next one is winding up. You potentially have some gaps in services. So there's some transition cost, which is why there's some advantage to continuing a two-year term and kind of continuing and not rebidding each year.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Trustee Rocker.
So we're locking in a price regardless of what happens in the labor market, right?
We are locking in a not-to-exceed price. And so there... In the renewal periods, there are sometimes options for adjustments or negotiation with any other contract. But there are the potential for arguing that we could reduce price. That rarely happens, to be transparent. But we are attempting to lock in a price, but we are definitely locking in for the first two years, correct?
I'm just thinking about what's going to happen in the labor market come January.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this a new contract because we just finished the previous company?
The amount of board-approved renewals ended. And so as with this, if we reach the maximum duration of the term, we could not exceed five years because of the board approval. We would have to bring this back to you.
Okay. I had a concern with the previous company in that... And I just want to make sure that this one is following. I didn't see anything that says what the hourly rate was going to be for the employees. And so... And one of the concerns was that the amount that they gave us was very different than what they gave the employees. So, you know, I don't see anything here that says how much our employees are getting paid by the hour. Are they out getting insurance or any of that? Would it be here?
Not in this. In their proposals, they do submit wage proposals for the different categories of employees, different certifications required or different skill levels, education, training requirements per that scope of work or job role. Additionally, Dr. Montgomery and I will say we've spoken a lot about vendor performance management, and so we're doing a lot more activity in monitoring adherence to the contract terms without interjecting ourselves in the private practices of a business.
And I would just add for clarification, it's the incumbent provider, so it's the same provider.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that, you know, that the employees that have their boots on the ground, that are actually doing the work, the maintenance work and, you know, the janitorial work, are getting paid what they should be getting paid.
Trustee Laredo, if I might add, this vendor we're proposing is the existing contractor that these concerns have been raised with, which is that and other reasons why I suggested giving trustees a little more time before we locked in on this five-year commitment. So that's... No, not to belabor the point, but...
But I think that if we... Let's say that we approved it, but we're still giving that two-year leeway so the Chancellor can reevaluate. I mean, one of the problems that we have is that we give a contract, then we don't evaluate yearly. And we should be evaluating yearly because there's a clause in there that says that if we're not happy with the evaluation, then we can, you know, change the contract. Okay? So I would recommend that if we go forward, that we make sure that we do this evaluation so that we don't have the problems to the employees that we've had before.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Trustee Chieven.
If we were to, through some way or another, not proceed with this tonight, what's the impact? Is any cessation in service or like what would happen?
If we didn't proceed tonight, there would be an exponential cost to maintain services through any alternate procurement methods we have available.
So the contract expires at the end of the year and...
Yeah, so a little more detail. So we have to clean the buildings on January 1st, right? That's really not an option, particularly January 2nd. And so we have to have janitorial services. So if the contract doesn't get approved this evening, what we would be bringing to the Board in January would be some length of time where we would have to do a JOC contract, a JOC janitorial contract, job order contract, which would have a higher cost for however many months we do that. Realistically, we would probably be continuing to use the current vendor through a JOC contract for the period of time until a decision was made whether to approve or not approve the contract, and then we would have to go from there.
Thanks.
Dr. Montgomery, you had a comment?
No, ma'am.
I have a follow-up question to that. What if we were not selecting the incumbent vendor? What would our transition plan be?
So if we don't select the current vendor or the recommended vendor, my understanding is that if the Board votes no, then we have to re...
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
If the recommendation from staff had been the number-two-ranked firm...
Correct.
What was going to be our transition plan starting that?
We would have to do a very short transition because we're at the end of the contract period. We would have to do a JOC contract for January, which we're going to have to do either way, right? Even if the Board approves tonight, we're going to have to do a JOC contract for January.
And I think that's important to point out because when Trustee Chieven asked the question, he was specific. What's the impact? And it was implied that if we did not approve this, we would have to do a JOC, where in either scenario, we're going to have to do a JOC because of the transition that has to take place.
The difference being that the Board would have to approve the JOC in January if we go past the month of January because of the dollar value improved. So we can only do one month before it has to come back to the Board.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Trustee.
Could we have avoided having to do that if we had considered this contract last month?
Yes.
Yes. The procurement was placed so that this doesn't happen again?
We do. We do indeed. And that's one of the reasons why we brought on board the interim executive director who had been working here previously. He's not been here many, many months, in fact, but he's made a lot of improved changes. And that's one of the things that he's putting in place, of course. And it's not just for procurement. It's for all of our other services as well. So we are completing a calendar, which will indicate when contracts expire, when we need to renew, et cetera, and get that information to the Board. I would like to say that whatever the Board decides, we are going to be welcoming the coordinating board here on the 1st of January, January 8th, 9th, and 10th. They will be coming here. And one of the things that we wanted to have done is our facilities cleaned, everything pristine, the garages taken care of, so that when all of these 150-plus presidents and chancellors and state persons would be able to come into a setting that we have that is ready and prepared to welcome them. So that is where we are, and that is what we're up against.
But, Madam Chair, that's going to happen regardless.
That's going to happen.
Regardless of whether we approve this contract or not today. Because it has to go under this additional funding that we have because we're approving this so last minute. Right? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Wilson.
I guess, you know, if we're going to bid it again, we're probably going to come up with very much the same result. So what's... Why would there be any benefit in putting it off is what my question is, you know? And if... Most likely, the price will probably go up. So, you know, we're either going to have to do it now or do it in a couple of months. So, you know, I don't see the... I don't see the issue of voting on it tonight.
Trustee Wilson, if I may, my earlier motion about giving us... There were a lot of questions that were asked that haven't been fully resolved in my... At least in this trustee's mind. So the request to delay it was really just to delay till January. It wasn't to delay for two months or anything. It was just to get greater clarification, really understand the questions around wage issues. That's a big deal to this trustee to make sure that we've done the due diligence necessary. Because as it stands... And there was an email that came in around some of the small business practices of this current vendor. And I think it deserves a bit more diligence, at least for this trustee to be comfortable making a vote, especially if I'm going to be voting affirmatively in support of renewing the contract or engaging in a new contract.
He's not talking about refitting it. He's just talking about postponing it for a vote next month.
Excuse me. Trustee Laredo made a valid point. What needs to happen is we need to do evaluations after every year. And that way, we'll know what we're dealing with, and we wouldn't have the complaints that we received from... In an email that I can't talk about. But I think that that is the decision we need to make to move forward with evaluating yearly. And I think, listening to you talk, that's the direction you guys want to go in to make sure, you know, issues don't transpire with the employees of these vendors. And so... And like Trustee Wilson said, you know, regardless if we vote it up or down, we still are going to probably end up having to make some of the same decisions and having some of the same issues. So what we have to do, we have to stay on top of this. We just can't let... We just can't select a vendor and vote... You know, vote on a vendor and allow them to just have their way, and we not stay on top of the work that they are doing for this institution.
And but just to clarify, with the base term being two years, there is not an... Renewing at the end of year one to year two isn't really what happened. So it would be more that you would be canceling the contract for non-performance, if I'm not mistaken, if you're still in that base term? Is that correct?
It depends on what the wording is in the procurement. But if the initial term is the two years, then they get the full two years for the initial. If it's flexible in the procurement, then we can draft the clause for the contract term more flexible.
We need to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much. So we're now ready to vote?
Sharon?
Yes.
That's yes, Frumey.
Received.
I'm turning this on.
Hold on. Okay.
Yeah, that's yes, Frumey.
Received.
The motion passed with a vote of six in favor, one opposing, and one abstaining.
Is there a motion to approve Item D, Hazardous and Universal Waste Removal Services, Project Number RFP 25-02B?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Okay, it has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This item is recommended for your consideration to authorize the Chancellor to execute a contract. for your consideration to authorize the chancellor to execute a contract with, for the Environmental Services LLC to provide hazardous and universal waste removal services in accordance with RFP 25-02B. With your permission, Madam Chair, Dr. Bidenfeld will present the item. Dr. Bidenfeld.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, Board. RFP 25-02B hazardous and universal waste removal services is a request for proposal to provide legally required and compliant services removing a number of wastes that we sometimes take for granted, flammable liquids, corrosive materials, poisons, toxins, compressed gases, but also things such as batteries and light bulbs which have statutory requirements for disposal methods. The recommended vendor is Treaty Environmental Services LLC. This vendor met all the criteria and additionally provides services that we may want to use as certain programmatic offerings expand in the labs on certain campuses. So they have the capacity to not only service 3100 main or existing needs, but also the expanded. And there is a maximum threshold. While our prior year spend was $90,000, it was recommended that proposed expansions and programmatic offerings or other needs, that we would have a larger threshold for this contract. And it's another two-year contract with the option to renew for three additional one-year terms.
Any questions, trustees? Trustee Wilson.
Well, what did we spend last year? Did you say 90?
Approximately $90,000. Yes, trustee.
Is there no questions or comments?
And that's where we expect to fall. We don't expect to need the full amount unless there's an expansion or we have some kind of accident or a spill or something along those lines.
I've got some old paint I might dump in your dumpster.
Okay. All right. If there are no additional questions or comments, we will now vote on item B. Thank you so much.
Sharon, that's yes for me.
Received.
Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
There a motion to approve item C banking resolution authorization?
So moved. Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to recommend that the board consider approving banking resolutions, authorizing the senior vice chancellor of finance and administration and CFO, Slideo, to establish accounts entered into agreements and transactions contemplated by the provisions of treasury management services by depository banks. So with your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Dr. Sherrie Hahn to provide an overview and answer all questions.
I don't have materials for this.
That's fine. That's fine.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. So it'll be a change. So no additional. Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Trustee Wilson.
I mean... Mr. Atkins?
Are we still doing business with the last two? Tech Pool and the Bank of New York?
So we still carry investments with Tech Pool. We'll have to double-check on the Bank of New York. I don't believe so.
But we can remove them? Yeah.
We can, yes.
Or update them. Can you just update it?
The signature authority here is just to allow Dr. Sherrie Hahn to enter into and finalize those transactions as we make investments on a regular basis.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Voting is now open.
Sharon, that's yes for me. I'm trying to find this on.
Received.
Thank you.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, I know. You're not going to show the, because you don't really tell me to wait until I see it.
Okay. The board would now adjourn to a close or executive session under the Texas Government Code, section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076. Of the open meeting act as stated in the notice of this meeting, should any final action voted decision be required in the opinion of the board on any matter considered in closed session, such final action voted decision shall be taken up in the open meeting or subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof. The meeting is hereby adjourned to executive session at 5:50 p.m. For those trustees joining closed session by video conference, please be reminded to disconnect from the open session portion of the meeting and join closed session with the WebEx link provided for the closed session.
Seven oh three, seven oh four P M.
I move to approve the proposed settlement of the following cases. U S District Court, Southern District of Texas, Houston Division, Zelda Brown versus Houston Community College System at all, Jimmy Adams at all versus Houston Community College System, and Jeffrey Austin at all versus Houston Community College System, as discussed in closed session with any settlement funds to be paid from fund to balance.
Trustee Cheven, if I could get the last portion of that motion?
The last phrase is with any settlement funds to be paid from fund balance.
And, and who's second? Thank you. Look like Dr. Tamas is on. Dr. Tamas?
Yes, I'm on.
Thank you.
Are you guys voting now or not yet?
Would you like for the motion to be read again? Adriana?
No, no, I'm just asking, no, I, I, I heard the motion, I was on.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
If, trustee Tamas, if you're gonna vote, we'll need you to turn your camera on.
I will, but it's not open yet for a vote, is it?
Yes.
Okay, there I am. So, the, the, it's no for me, I, I just can't. Thank you.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion fails. With a vote of four in favor, two opposing, and one abstaining. Okay, please note that, item D. Okay, item G has been pulled from the agenda, and will be on the agenda at a later date. So, the meeting is adjourned at seven oh eight P M. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone, Merry Christmas.
Hope you feel better, Adriana.